Amy's on the line here, too, so she's gonna kind of talk about helping tag team this a little bit tonight. But it's our, these, these three slides are, I guess. I guess what I would say is we'll, before we get into kind of nitty gritty here. Until we, what am I trying to say? We'll roll through these numbers and then we'll go to the next slide, which you should have paper in front of you. And the last slide has the historical perspective that I think you had asked for some time back. And so that will help us to figure out what that last line, the last column number should be. So I guess, in fact, as I sit here now. How about we just go to that last slide, that third page of the paper you have in front of you? And we'll just cut to the chase. You can always go back. I think that, I'm probably throwing Sheila for a loop because it may have been on a different, there we go. Screen. Can you blow that up some? Of course, we have it in front of us, too. Okay, so the 2024 double starred column is something that Amy and I just kind of developed as we, as we looked at it. And of course, want to bring you in because we're gonna, and obviously, whatever we decide tonight is not set in stone. It's something we can talk about. It's not set in stone until December. What day is it?
11th.
11th.
December 11th, when we vote on the budget. And even then, we can change it next year. It's not like it's ever cast solely, totally in stone. But we would like to get close tonight. So, sales tax, you can see, we're anticipating getting pretty close to that $1.5 million number this year. We're thinking that maybe next year, 1.4 would be maybe a decent number to shoot for. As you know, we're also, we're starting our shop local, trying to keep people in the, in the habit of, if they can't find it in town, buy it online. Shopping from their couch, as Trustee Brentonall would say. So I always give you credit for that.
Forever.
Always give you credit for it. Any, have you guys had any thoughts? I, I know we didn't send anything out ahead of time, so I guess this is just a, just a conversation about it tonight. Just like to kind of hear your thoughts on all these.
Jeff, why do we think sales tax is going down next year?
Well. Historically, this board has been pretty conservative on sales tax. I don't think it's going down personally, unless you believe that the recession that was supposed to be here by now will come sometime later. I, I, those tea leaves escaped me, so I don't know, but that's a great question. I honestly don't have any indication it's gonna go down.
Historically, we budget low for revenues and high for expenditures to kind of cover ourselves.
That would be conservative thinking, I guess.
I'm fine with 1.4.
I like the 1.4. I think not knowing what's gonna happen in the economy with interest rates still moving around and the fact that we're going to potentially be charging our citizens more for water. Some citizens are gonna have less money to buy other goods with, which could drive those sales tax numbers down slightly. And I always like to, you know, aim low and end up high at the end.
Aim low and overachieve?
Overachieve, yeah.
I was just curious if there was some indicator that we were looking at that was telling us that that was where it was trending? Like in terms of the current year, are we seeing a decrease in sales tax? I don't remember seeing that in the financials.
We saw some, we saw some.
It was seasonal.
Flattening, maybe, I guess I would say, on one month? Where we were less than the year before. I forget, was that a couple of months ago? Amy, I don't have it, I don't think I have that right in front of me, but.
We were down in June and then went back up to higher in July than we were the previous year. August, we're flat.
It's almost like they saved it up and spent it all in next month.
If you go a little bit lower, then Trey doesn't think he has as much money to spend.
Why does it always come to me with spending money?
Because you're the one that spent it, dude!
An asset in a few hours?
Yeah. The PD is right up there with him, so, there. Feel better, Trey?
Little bit.
Yeah, I think 1.4 is good to start with, and we'll see how, I mean, like you said, this isn't set in stone, so. We can see what the trends are the next couple of months.
Yeah.
If something changes drastically, we can, we can make a move then.
Though I guess the department has a pretty solid number to start looking at stuff with. Okay. Our property tax pretty well set by what we have to work with, and obviously, it's going up pretty significantly by, just by, driven by the increase in sales prices. And I don't think that's been certified yet, right, Amy?
Not yet. They sent out the, they'll send us another one probably in late October, early November.
Any observations on property tax?
No, that one's pretty, like you said, pretty set.
Use taxes. Again, we budgeted 400,000 this year. Looks like we're gonna be well over that. We just thought we'd stay conservative and stick with that. I find it interesting, well, I suppose. Most of that, Amy, I think is driven by motor vehicle sales, correct?
Yes.
And if UAW goes out on strike and there's no cars to buy, I guess you'd have to buy them from China or somewhere, right? So I don't, I don't know that that number will suffer. I think, we saw a big, big bump in 2022, obviously. 544,000, and that was probably that pent up demand for cars after the pandemic.
Yeah, then it went back down.
Yep.
I think 400 is a good starting point.
I mean, the prevailing logic isn't whether or not people will buy, it's whether they'll buy new or used, right?
You still gotta charge the use tax.
Covers both, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I agree with Chris that the 400 is a good number. People may have the same amount to spend, but if prices go up or there are strikes, they'll simply buy a used vehicle instead of a new one.
Yeah.
So then the price, the use tax may come down because of that, is what you're saying?
Ever so slightly, but the volume won't. If somebody's gonna spend 20,000, the only question is whether or not they're gonna buy new or used. I doubt it's gonna be that they're gonna spend less.
Yeah.
I keep thinking we're gonna, I mean, we had lots of building going on this year, but only two buildings that, out at the apartment complex, and I think we'll probably have some more of those. We've got three that have pulled, I think, three buildings out there pulled permits now. So those, those use taxes will, a lot of those will come in this year, probably. Because they'll try to get started on it, but then hopefully, they'll get those done and pull some more permits and work on, and, and, you know, because there, there is some use tax with that, too. Okay? Highway users tax, that's on lane miles, and it's fuel taxes, statewide fuel taxes, right, Trey?
Yep.
So we don't have a whole lot to say about that unless we build some more roads. Building permits, we kind of left that flat, just because that's, it's kind of surprised us in the wrong way the last couple of years, so I think, let's just keep it, keep it right where it is. At the same time, mineral lease and severance money has surprised us on the upside each of the last couple of years. You can see we budgeted 140,000 for '23, and we got 357,000. And we don't really, nobody gives us a heads up on that. It just sort of rolls in depending on what's going on in the oil and gas industry in our area. So we're, we're calling that 200,000 next year. And, and that's based largely on the strength of, the, and I was gonna say the knowledge of, but the impression that there's actually some more oil or gas activity south of Rifle. That was reported in the paper a couple of weeks ago, so, and then just, you know, when you talk to people, they talk about there's an uptick in, in product, or exploration and production. I don't know if there's more rigs in town. Do you know, Trey? Have you heard anything but more about?
No.
So we're ticking that up slightly, just based on the last two years of actuals. The county gives us some share of sales taxes, and we've kept that pretty flat the last couple of years. We tick it up a little bit this year. Franchise fees. Let me back up to, one of the things I, that we've done with this category report, revenue report, is I've picked out the things that are about, that are six figures. I mean, we, we have revenue, as you know, by looking at the line item detail. We have a lot of revenues on a lot of different things, from concerts to T-ball. But they don't all show up in this. This is really just the big picture stuff. And we, we will, we, we have projections for 2024 on all of those lines, which you'll see as we get deeper into the detail of the budget. These are the big picture items. Franchise fees up to 112,000, trash service fees. We put this in because it's just a big number, but it really doesn't have a lot of impact on our budget because it's, it's money that is passed, passed through. Oh, did you read my mind?
Yes.
Radar? So the trash service fees were, we haven't heard from the trash company yet, but they are, by contract, allowed to raise those by 5%. They don't raise them, they cannot raise, that's with your blessing, of course. They can't do that until mid-year, and so we just, that's a 2.5% increase that we're just banking on for next year. Admin fees. We, you'll recall that we charge all of the various departments and funds for the work that they, that the administration does for them. Now, we've been on it, we've been slowly ticking that up by half a percent per year. We're trying to get up to about 10%, and we're currently, in 2023, we were at 6.5. This represents an admin fee of a, of 7%. And what that, what that does is it acknowledges that each of those, like, say, water, wastewater, they don't have people in their department who do their collections or, and I don't mean sewer collections, I mean collections of, of rates and fees. The town's admin staff does that, so we just bill that back and, and have that as a revenue, a cost center. Very commonly done in government. Water service fees, we're acknowledging the fact that water rates are gonna go up. That 1.5 million is, we're not exactly sure what that number's gonna be. We're refining that as we go, but that's kind of where we think it's gonna be, somewhere in that range. You can see that in 2023, we budgeted a million, and we're gonna, we think we're gonna be closer to 1.2. So that 1.5 is probably pretty conservative. Water, wastewater, you can see we budgeted 1 point, almost 1.3, so we're gonna be probably closer to 1.5. We're gonna budget the one, we're gonna recommend that we budget the 1.3 again. We could probably tick that up a little bit based on this year's performance, but we're gonna suggest that you consider not raising. You know, normally, we raise that by at least 3% every year. We're giving what we're about to do with water service fees. We're gonna recommend, or at least ask you to consider maybe not raising that 3% this year. Just acknowledge that we are bringing, that water rates will be going up fairly significantly. Any conversation about any of that at this point?
No, I think we'll get some more information here.
What's that?
We'll have some more information during our race.
Yes, we will. And then water tap fees, wastewater tap fees, we're keeping those right at 300,000. We were quite low, actually, this year. I think that reflected in 2022 actual. You can see those were pretty big numbers. And I think those, that's probably due to the fact that we had some prepaid tap fees by Rivertrace. And Trey, do you remember, did they buy all 96 units worth of tap fees that year?
I believe they did.
Okay. So we're not gonna see any, anything else from them. That'll just be new, those will be new tap fees. And then irrigation fees, we're gonna bump up slightly. And Amy, do you have some information on water wastewater grants and, and rents for Silt Senior Housing?
Yes, so our grants for, that we think we'll receive or that we are applying for is 2.8 million dollars for this year, and the housing rental revenue worth, believe it'll be about $294,000 for the year. I can give you history of 2019, 2020, and so forth in grant revenues in the water fund, if you'd like.
Hey, that number's always all over the place, so I don't know if it shows a trend or not by looking at past history, so.
It is. It is all over the place. Like, we budgeted 13, or 1.3 million for this year. In 2022, we didn't get any. In '21, we got 475, nothing in '20, 272 in '19, and 213 in, in '18. So it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really depends on what we apply for, what it.
Correct. Well, we're looking at about 2.8 million that we are hoping to get. Well, not hoping. Part of that is 450,000 that we know we've already gotten. Then the six, or $767,000 grant that we got from, from DOLA for Boring. We've put in another million dollar grant to DOLA that we'll find out about sometime in October, the end of October. We're looking at putting in a, a request to Garco County Federal Mineral Lease District for our fan press, and we're hoping to get about 200,000 for that. And then, as well as Grand Avenue, we're looking to get about 200,000 from that. And then we, this year, applied for a traditional grant for the Sunrise Tank Number Two and asking for 183,000 for that.
All right.
So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any?
Question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yes, will we get any answers on those grants before budgeting is final, December 11th? So we have to budget with?
Well, some we will, like the, the grant that Amy was talking about toward the end of October. We'll have information on that. We're, we're gonna get an official letter on that on November 10th. But we'll probably know somewhere around Halloween for sure whether we got her or not. So that one will definitely be unknown as we go into the budget. And, you know, sometimes we get grants, we, we apply for something in January or February that we get in the fall that we didn't even know was gonna be a opportunity. Not that, I don't think that happens that often, but it can happen. And then we just come to you and say, hey, can we apply for this free money? And you say yes, and we go after it, and then when we get it, we do a supplemental and put it in the budget. So, but there's some, I think there's probably some we're not gonna know about.
Okay, Jeff.
Why was irrigation down in '22? Is that Seventh Street?
It was probably just a, we've missed a number.
It might be a typo.
Okay. I was just curious.
That would be significantly down. I'm glad you said something.
I'm guessing it's probably 210, Seventh World.
So in 20?
That makes sense, 210.
22, for irrigation fees. It was 255,626.95.
Oh, okay.
You know what that is, Jeff? That is irrigation tap fees. That's the number we got for tap fees.
Oh.
And of the irrigation fees. One line underneath.
I will take full credit for that because that spreadsheet is my work, transferred to Amy to fix up, so I'll take.
I should have, I should have caught that because it, I mean, but I was working, I was working on other things. I apologize.
That's your fault. Okay, and then just handed you was the, the actual detail sheet going back to 2018 with all the actual numbers associated with all of those revenue accounts and, and our expenditure accounts as well. So for your use in this process, so hang on to that. And be happy to kind of run through that, answer any questions you might have as, as, as we move through the budget process. Anything else tonight?
Hey, Amy, is this the up to date 24 numbers on this?
For what I just passed out as far as the budget goes?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
That is with what you and I discussed this afternoon?
Yes, okay.
It's as accurate as of September 11th at 4:48.
There you go.
Yes.
I, I like these numbers, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great place to start, so.
Okay.
Give staff a, a starting point. Go from there.
Perfect. Well, then we'll move on to our next topic if we're ready to go.
Let's do it.
We are very fortunate tonight to have Dan Young with us, a Silt resident and artist who spends a lot of time at the Silt River Preserve. And I'm just gonna introduce him and have him take it from there. Dan, you wanna come up and introduce yourselves?
Hopefully, this will work. And the first good news right off the bat is I'm not here to ask for money.
Welcome.
No worries about that.
Why not? Ask for money.
Welcome by a true wife.
I've got your own cheering section on this seat.
Yeah, this is my crew that's gonna ask for money. Now, I appreciate you guys letting me come in and sort of give you a sales pitch on the Silt River Preserve. I don't know, how many of you even have been over there?
Yeah.
That's good.
It's been a couple of months, yeah.
Yeah. Because I'm a huge advocate for it, as you will see in my slides as we go through this. And the reason I'm sort of here, Jeff asked me if I would do this, and my original thought was, heck, no. I mean, that's, that's kind of my secret place. I discovered it back in about 2012, 2013, when nobody went over there. And it was, it's a little gem, and I'm gonna show you why I think it is for multiple reasons. And my main hope is that we'll keep it that way.
First of all, I see, I think you know how to operate this.
Hit the arrow.
Arrows, something like that. Oh, perfect.
Yep.
So like I say, my, the reason I'm here is I want to show you what this little piece of property has, this 132 acres. And what my story is, I'm a landscape painter, and this painting you're looking at is painted from about, I think it was 2010, maybe. This is the road going into the Silt River Preserve. This is before I could get in there. I think it was actually before the city even had access to it. When I would, as a landscape painter, I'm always driving around looking for new places to paint, and I would drive by here every day and say, I wonder what's down there. And this is one of the paintings I did from the road on the way in before I was able to get in there. So I'm gonna show you a sample of some of the pieces. I have probably done well over 100 paintings easily on this piece of property. That's a whole nother entire slideshow that we can do another time. Here's a piece that was done from the parking lot. This is looking to the west. This was before the High Water Farm was there. This is a sunrise from one morning, probably in about 2013, maybe. This is a piece done down on the river. I mean, I am over there year round. I can promise you, I have pretty much stepped on every square foot of the property over there, including the island. I've waded across the river many a times and spent time on that island. And it started out, I was looking for paintings. There's another one. This is from the river looking to the west, and obviously, in the fall. Another piece, this is actually looking to the west and was looking to the east in the evening. And a lot, most of these paintings I set up and paint right on location over there. And like I say, for the first five years, I rarely saw anyone over there. About the only people that were using it were fishermen, maybe, and an occasional, somebody would come walk in there. And it's been interesting to see the progression of that property since it's become more well, more well-known. And the way I see it, there's three users over there. They're either fishermen, hikers, or photographers. And I know from your standpoint, I've discussed this with Jeff, that's part of the issue, is making this available to the public. And like I say, I have mixed feelings about that because people tend to do foolish things. And the time I, as I see more people over there, I And the time I, as I see more people over there, I see it. Give you an example, right now, somebody's gone down on the river and cleared out a place, and they've left a blanket down there, which I'm assuming they can come sit on whenever they want and watch what's going on in the river. But here in another month, when the weather changes, that blanket's gonna deteriorate, and there's gonna be, you know, trash all over the place. And that's one of my big issues with people is they do foolish things. So anyway, back to my original point, when I was spending all this time painting over there, I started noticing the wildlife. And when I paint, I set up, I may stand there for two hours and do a painting. And as I'm doing that, different creatures would come by, and I finally decided I need to start photographing some of these. So starting in about twenty-nineteen, I started photographing the wildlife that I've come across over there. And I think you'll be pretty amazed of the things I've seen. Later in the presentation, I have a few kind of epic things that have happened, little stories that I'll tell. I could probably go on with twenty minutes of each slide, but I won't do that. But feel free to ask questions as I go through these slides. If I hit the right button. That is the Silt River Preserve, the red square, that is a hundred and thirty-two acres. Every photograph that I'm gonna show you was taken on that hundred and thirty-two acres over approximately four years, four to five years. The deer are probably one of the most common things you'll see over there, and they cross back and forth on that island. So I have a lot of photographs of deer crossing the river. They're one of my favorites. Wild turkeys moved in there probably four years ago real consistently. When I first started going over there, was two really mean turkeys that ran most people off. I kind of liked them actually. They actually, I literally ran people off. I heard stories, but I'm not sure. They met their demise, but since then, the population has grown quite impressively. They're not in there all the time. They cover a lot of territory. I've seen as many as a hundred in there. Now there's about thirty-five, I would guess. As I go through this, you're gonna figure out pretty quick, I spend way too much time over here. I know way too much about the wildlife in this piece of property. The raccoons are probably the most common animal that lives over there, and you rarely see them. They're pretty much a hundred percent nocturnal. I've caught them two or three times during the day. Here's a few shots of them. Like I say, the most most predominant guy over there is the mule deer. They're not, they're about there year-round, but they pass through. But there's pretty much always mule deer over there. The bald eagles are what everybody knows. Yeah, see, people will see me over there with my camera, and they always say, are you photographing the bald eagles? So the bald eagles have been longtime residents. I've been photographing for about seven years. You may or may not know, there was two nests over there. One was right off the parking lot, and one is on the island. Last spring, unfortunately, when they used the nest for the first time in about seven years, it blew down, actually while they were in it. And for some reason this year, they did not use the nest on the island. They've moved, there's a third nest somewhere. It's not on the property. It's either downriver, upper. They're still around, and I still see them, but they're not using the nest. I'm hoping they come back to the island nest next year. These are what I believe is young Cooper's hawks. There's also Cooper's hawk nests in there. And this little guy, I learned through another photographer, if you make, talk to them, they will talk to you. If you look at both of these guys, they are talking to me. If you make funny noises, they will talk back to you. So I had this guy in here last spring and spent quite a bit of time communicating with him. I'm also easily entertained. This is, these are osprey. There is not an osprey nest on the property. It's actually on the gravel pit next door. There's a gravel pit on what would be the west of it, I guess, and they have a platform that the osprey have used for four or five years, but they cross through and spend a lot of time on the preserve. This this is actually a young osprey that they're pretty, pretty open for having their picture taken. The adults not so much. The blue heron, there's a lot of blue heron that pass through here. I'm not sure where the rookery is, but they're a very common sight there on the property. This is a rare sight here. This is a trumpeter swan. And I've only seen him fly over multiple times until this year. I don't know if you know, but they've they've got the pot water back in the ponds over there. Trey knows a lot more than that than I do, but they start filling them last winter, and as long as they get water, they stay full. So this spring, there was a huge increase in water fowl. This was one of them. I have never seen one land there before. First time I met this guy, he wanted nothing to do with me and flew away. And by the fourth time, he would swim right up to me, and I've got shots of, you know, drips of water, became pretty tame. So there, obviously, he'd been around people before. So that was a wonderful addition to the spring inhabitants. This guy was one of my favorites from about four years ago. He was the big guy that ruled the roost over there. He is no more, but he was a favorite. And what I'd like to, being as I'll have his picture up, when I first saw this guy, he would pretty much run from me, and within a couple of weeks, he got very comfortable with me, and I was able to get extremely close to him. One thing I noticed, when they put the trail in over there, which I had mixed feelings about, it turned out to be a really good thing, and I do believe that's something that should be addressed, that that keeps ma- being maintained. It was put in, I believe, two years ago, maybe three, and it's been mulched all the way around. And most people thoroughly enjoy that that path over there. The problem is, it does not last one year. The the weeds grow, and you couldn't find it right now. If you didn't know where it was, it would be wonderful. I don't know, what's it called, a brush hog or something? Whether, you know, the expense to get a landscape company or a once a year to to brush hog that thing. Because this guy, for example, I would be photographing him like this, and I would hear voices. People would be coming. And he'd walk one way and lay down, and I would step back in the trees, and the people would walk right by us, not even a he'd get back up, I'd get back up, and we'd continue our photo session. The point being, this, I mean, this this place can tolerate that. You know, that when that that type of use, when people are walking that trail. Personally, I'd love to have it so there was signs that say, please stay on trail. Not that I would, but it'd be good. It'd be good if everybody else would. And the other issue is, I mean, it's no, no dogs are allowed over there. And I would really love to see a bigger sign enforcing that. There's nothing when I've been over there, that influences the wildlife, all of it, than when a dog comes over there. I've been over there multiple times, and somebody shows up with their dog, and I've watched the deer, I've watched everything go crazy. So it'd be wonderful if that could be, you know, even a sign that says, you know, no dogs, five hundred dollar fine would deter people probably. Because I see people about once a month with a dog in there. And that, I think, with having the dog park is a wonderful, you know, second option for them. Those of you that have been over there, there's a si- nice white sign that says, no dogs allowed, please use the Silt River Park. I will admit, I bought that online and put it up myself, because I thought it was a good idea. It's probably deterred a few people anyway, but I would love to see that enforced. Like I mentioned, the wild turkeys, they are pretty tame this time of year. I mean, I have a pretty good-sized lens, but I am really close to this guy. During the spring, they're pretty, pretty tame. This is one of my favorite residents. This is an American mink. I probably saw them for two years before I ever got a photograph with them. These guys do not stop moving. And they're pretty, you know, wary little characters. But I sort of learned their patterns, and over time, I sort of, whether it's a bond or got lucky, was made, I have a lot of photographs of minks, which are fairly rare. Some more of our mule deer. That's a recent shot. This is a prairie falcon, and he's actually feasting on a flicker. I saw him dive down there, so I went around to see what he was eating, and see the blood on his beak. He was eating a flicker, which are not my favorite birds, but. Oops. This is a shot, if you look right here, of a grasshopper.
Yeah.
A lot of the wildlife that I've discovered over here, I figured out what they were by seeing their tracks long before I ever saw them. I've been watched since seeing this guy's tracks for about four years. So I knew it was a bobcat, but I never saw it. I figured maybe it was nocturnal. I'll go over there in the morning, I'll go over there at night. I'll, I mean, I've been in there, you know, every every bit of, I could never find this guy. About a week and a half ago, he showed up. And I actually saw him three different times. First time he ran from me. By the third time, he came back to check me out, so I got some pretty good shots of him. I did have a game camera shot from a couple of years ago, but this is the first time I actually saw him. A lot of coyotes over there. This was a rather close encounter when he was coming into the sun and did not see me. They had a den over there one year. This is a couple of the little ones that I managed to photograph. This was from several years ago. They're pretty prolific over there. I don't know if the guys on the property above them eliminate them at all, but there's quite a few coyotes in there. About two springs ago, we had two resident bull elk that stayed in there for about two weeks in the spring. I called them the Velvet Brothers. These two guys were in there for a couple of weeks. Took me a long time to get close to them. They kept smelling me, so finally, one day, I caught them on the edge and got some pretty decent shots of them. This was another pretty rare sighting. Even the D O W knows nothing about them. These are river otters. Same thing, first time I saw their tracks. They have a track very similar to a cat, but in the snow, they slide on their belly. So I kept finding these tracks with slide marks. And I thought, what the heck is this? Could this possibly be? And I finally did some research and found out it was otters, but I never saw them. I could go down there at dusk, and there would be nothing. And then I'd come back the next morning, and there'd be fish, what was left of fish on the ice, all their tracks, so I assumed they were nocturnal. Well, one morning, I happened to be standing there, and these two guys came swimming up the river in the springtime. Well, that, when I finally had made some strange noises to get them to stop, they looked up at me, and otters growl. I did not know that. They growled at me. So they gave me a couple shots before they disappeared. So I called the D O W, and they were surprised I'd seen them more than once. I've seen them about five times over there. But they don't even know how big their range is. This is a kingfisher, another tough guy to photograph. They do not sit still, and they are unbelievably acute to the slightest movement. I mean, I can move the finger on on to to do the shutter on the camera, and they will fly off. So they're another one that I've spent a long time trying to get photos of. This is a very rare unifooted furball. Kind of hop from rock to rock down there. You don't, you don't see them very often. That's more or less what they look like. That's a muskrat. There's actually one living in the pond over there right now. More of the wild turkeys. There's our trumpeter swan again. Like I say, he was there for about two weeks. Got a lot of fantastic shots of it. The beaver tend to pass through there also. There was one winter where they were in there for a month at least, and then I won't see them for two or three months. Which is common with a lot of the wildlife I see over there. It's not a full-time resident. They pass through. They tend to stay there for a week or two, depending. This was a a morning where I could not figure out why all the baby turkeys were up in the tree, and then I saw why. There was a coyote trying to catch the turkeys. So he had to run the whole flock of them up into the trees, and I spent about an hour trying to get one to step in the opening so I could get a decent shot of them. The turkeys that small can fly. This is my mink again. This is catching crawfish. That river is full of crawfish, and this is mostly what they feed on. This particular mink became sort of my friend after two years of not letting me photograph it. It finally decided I was okay and gave me some amazing shots. It would catch crawdads, come up on the ice, and actually drop it. And let me take photos. It would pose for me, and then he would grab it and run. Unfortunately, the coyotes also found the mink up on the shore, and that was the demise of this little guy. This one, actually, this was a female, I believe. It had a den over there. But it was an amazing predator. I watched it take at least a half a dozen fish and lots of crawfish. And the elk, the past three years, the elk have decided to winter in there. Before that, I saw them in there maybe once. Now, those of you that have been, I've probably seen them, there is a massive herd that has been coming in there the past couple of years. These are kestrels. Whether you can see it or not, they're all holding mice or lizards. They are amazing little predators and rodent control. They feed on a lot of rodents. There's at least four kestrel nests over there that I'm aware of. Another great heron. See, this is a young one, so I managed to get fairly close to it. This is a merganzer on the river. A lot of merganzers that come through here. There's the trumpeter swan again. In the fall, the mule deer move in here pretty steadily, and they they get a little frisky come the fall time, so. It's a couple of them sparring. I've actually only once witnessed witnessed the real thing. And I've got photos of it, but they're not very good. If you've ever witnessed mule deer, when they really go at it, it's quite impressive. This is a muskrat that was coming over to check me out, I guess. This was in the pond. This is the resident muskrat that lives in the ponds over there. These are the sandhill cranes, another one that I'd seen fly over a lot. I rarely see them landed. In the past year, this spring, I saw them in there oh, at least a half a dozen times. They never did have little ones that I saw. I'm not sure where they nested, but I never saw young ones. More of the deer crossing, crossing to the island. The island is their safe place over there. Nobody pretty much goes over there, and occasionally a fisherman will. There's the bobcat again. Same encounter. This is a hooded merganzer, which is another one that I don't see that often, for sure. And I mentioned the pond. The pond made a really big difference. The the one on the left is a northern shoveler. I had never seen one of those before. But they were hanging around in the pond. The one on the right is a white-faced ibis. I've seen them fly over, but I've never seen, well, I've seen them maybe once or twice on the river. This one spent about two weeks on one of the ponds, just feeding. And the other one is a flicker. Oops, I'm going backwards. That's that big guy again that was very cooperative for a few years, was a favorite. This is the mink again, having that's, looks like the crawfish was about ready to lay eggs, so it didn't make it. Few more shots of the elk, and this is, this is right off the parking lot. This is the beavers from a couple of winters ago. Like I say, they spent at least, at least a month in there, two winters ago. Lot of cottontail rabbits over there. They're running cycles. There's a bunch over there right now. This is a young bald eagle. I'm assuming it's one of the youngsters from the local pair. I've watched that. I've been photographing them for about seven years, until la- last year, when they lost the nest. They were a very successful pair of eagles. I've seen triplets twice. So they are a very successful pair of eagles. Another shot of the turkey. And like I say, they're somewhat tame. Nobody bothers them over there. This is another young kingfisher feeding in the ponds, even though there's no fish in the ponds, they feed on the on the dragonfly larva. I was watching them dive. I could not figure out what they're, they're eating dragonfly larva. So those ponds just opened up a whole new feeding place for them. So the the young ones, the whole family was there for about a month. This is a jackrabbit. I see them pass through from time to time. This is the mink. This is what happens if you interrupt his dinner of a crawfish. He was not happy with me. Lot of red-winged blackbirds over there. I'm I'm a little light on all the all the birds. It's not my favorite thing, but there is a lot of different bird species in there. I tend to to photograph the other other animals. This is a, this was a buck that was in there for about four years, which is about what the lifespan seems to be for these bigger bucks. The photo on the left is him in velvet, and this was about two weeks later after he'd lost his velvet. This one disappeared after last year. He didn't come back this year. This one disappeared after last year. He didn't come back this year, which is not uncommon. I don't, not sure what. And he made it through hunting season, so that didn't get him, but. This is an ermine, also known as a weasel. This is the winter coat. This is photographed was from, geez, like one of the first years I was in there, probably 2012 maybe. That's what they look like in the winter. This is the summer. They're also called weasels. I just don't, they're, they're around, but I don't see them and they're like the mink. They do not stop moving. So I got a lot of blurry shots of these guys. This is a cormorant. And there's a, there's a big, they have a big rookery down river, so I see them quite often and they're amazing fishing birds. These are the pelicans that you've probably seen or fly around from time to time. They show up in the spring. Couple fawns that are in there this year right now. I don't see them that often, but they're in there. The otter again. This is a northern harrier. This is a female northern harrier. This was the resident one that lived in there for about two years. Same thing, I couldn't get near her for the first, at least two years. Slowly, she let me get closer and closer. And it got to the point where she would fly up with a mouse, that's a mouse in her talon, fly right up to me and eat the mouse and let me photograph her. Which was pretty amazing, until the coyote got her too, so. She isn't more. Oh, there he is now. Early morning encounter. I caught two of them swimming in the river. Came right at me, never saw me, but pretty close. This is that same bobcat again, when he walked a little bit and got in the shadows. That's that same big guy again, giving me the look, oh, it's you again. There's our resident bald eagles. That's a shot of the nest. And the interesting, I'll do a little, how am I doing on time?
You're fine, I think, yep.
This, this is the nest on the island. This is photographed from the other side of the river. And when the nest blew down last year in the parking lot, there was some geese nesting in this particular nest. And until that year, every year I'd watch the eagles run the geese out of the nest. They did not last year. After their nest blew down, the eagles flew over, ran the geese out of the nest and sat on their eggs. The females sat on the eggs for two weeks and hatched them. And I did not get pictures. I saw pictures. There's a group that actually watches the eagles' nest and I met one of them over there. They had pictures of the goslings in the nest with the eagle. I'm not sure out played out. I went there every day trying to, I'm not sure what happened. But they actually hatched the goose eggs. It was amazing. I should have tried to find that picture, cause I still have it somewhere. Like I say, they're an amazing pair. At least seven years I've watched them have little ones. These are the coyotes. This year, there's actually five of them that were together. This was the parents and three little ones. There's one to the left and there's one behind the middle one that you can't see. The one on the left and the one on the right are cooper's hawks. And the two in the middle are actually peregrine falcons. I had no idea there are peregrine falcons around here. I mean, I think they nest in cliffs, but they tend to roost, they come through the trees. I've seen them five or six times. I'll see them roosting in the cottonwoods. I've seen them down on the river before. I'm not sure, but that was pretty cool sighting. Hey, this is my, kind of one of my epic stories I wanted to tell you about. I was, I came up, there's a creek that runs down the east side of this property. And I happened to step up on it and I see something tumbling down the river, their little creek. And I thought, what the heck is that? So I started photographing. And this is what it turned out to be. This first shot, I thought maybe it was a fish spawning or something. But that on the right is the mink. And he grabbed a hold of this fish and they had a ha- epic battle rolling down the creek. Finally, the mink managed to get the, this cutthroat, about an 18-inch cutthroat up to the side of the creek. He had lo- he had grabbed, grabbed a hold of the, the, the cutthroat, right under the throat, and drug it up onto the shore. Several times, they went back in the water. The fish would flop and pull the mink back in. I'm sure the fish weighed more than the mink. Yeah, it's technically bigger than the mink. And he's watching me the whole time, which you see, he's got a death grip on this thing. And the trout finally died and he actually, this is right near where, I think this is the female where her den was. And she actually hauled it all the way up the hill over the top. I couldn't get around fast enough to get photo, and took it into her den. It was quite amazing. It's maybe one of those situations I'll never, ever see again, but it was quite impressive how good of a predator this guy is. I mean, you see right there, look how much bigger the fish is than the, than the mink. And this little series of photographs, I think is kind of interesting. This is a guy, I, I told myself I would never name the deer over there. But this guy just had to name, I, I call him Elvis, cause he likes to have his picture taken. This was the first time I saw him and I didn't, I didn't think about him. But if you look, my pointer is not working, on his chin, there's a little black spot. And on his nose, on the left side of his nose, there's a scar. So that's his real definite characteristic. As these things grow up, that will stay the same. So there he is in 2018. He showed up again in 2019. If you look, his chin's got that black spot in both of these photos. And if you look at his left antler, the second time going back is broke off. So when I kept re- running into him, I realized it was the same deer. So then he showed up again in 2020. Well, now, if you look at that antler, you can see that little twisty curl on that left antler. So it was pretty obvious. There's still the black mark on his chin. Here he is again in 2020 with the real obvious, you can see that twisted antler. And about two weeks later, he shows up again. As you can see, he's broke that little twisted piece off in the exact same place. So I knew it was the same deer. So the interesting part of the story, once again, proof that I spend way too much time over there. I was over there this spring, just wandering around, I found that little twisted piece. This is the piece that broke off in 2020. Cause as you can see when I'm, he did, he never had this twisted antler again. So it was pure luck that I found. I talk about a one in a million. Here he is in 2021. This is the same buck. You can tell he's got that black spot on his chin. You can't see in this particular shot, but there's, he's got a scar on his nose. So he's an impressive buck in 2021. Here he is in 2022. The spot on his nose, you can kind of see the scar on the left, left side of his nose there. Here's another shot of him in 2022. He's pretty much knows me on a first-name basis, so once again, I'm extremely close to him. Apparently a little too close. We, we got a little attitude with this one. And I'm actually shocked he's lasted this long. He does not stand here all the time and that no one's taking him out yet. Here he is in May of this year. This is the last time I've seen him so far. I'm hoping he shows up this fall. He'll be an impressive buck. And that's the final, so. So any questions about the wildlife at the Silk River Preserve?
No, there's a lot of animals over there that I didn't think would be.
Yeah.
And the river otters, never seen one.
Yeah, even the D O W admitted, they were shocked I had seen them that many times. Yeah, they said they, I think they were put in on the Colorado-Utah border and they migrated. And if you look on their site, they actually have a map where people plot where they are. There's more in the Colorado River from Glenwood going toward Eagle. A lot of people have spotted them there. There's none through this area, but. So I say, what my main goal is, is that we don't ruin this. Because I just, it's, it's a wonderful escape for wildlife. You know, I'm not anti-hunting or anything like that. Don't get me wrong, but this is a nice, safe space for them. So I just hope moving forward, when we're all six feet under, that this place is still available for future generations to do this. You know, be able to see wildlife and photograph it up close. And this is one of the few places where you have access, public access, to see this kind of wildlife. And like I say, for me, for a landscape painter, it's been a goldmine. But the more time I spent there, I thought, you know, somebody needs to know what's here. But I don't want people to know what's there.
People do dumb things.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that was awesome.
Right, right, yeah. No ball field.
And one of your hawks actually has a nest out behind our wastewater plant.
Oh, no kidding?
Just across the river from the preserve.
Okay. Is it the redtail?
I believe it is the redtail. We've, out the back of the sludge building, we've seen them flying around and then we've spotted their nest in the tree back there.
Cause the, there was a redtail nest down on the river for years. And when they put the first trail and it went right under the nest, and I don't know if that's what ran them off. They haven't been in there in a couple of years, but.
Yeah, they just moved across the river.
Okay. I'd love to know where the eagles have moved to.
Yeah, I haven't found, I heard there was a new nest supposedly going, that had started there by the B L M building on the front of the road.
Oh, which could be the same.
In that stretch, but I have not seen it and I haven't heard anything else about it. And D O W hadn't seen it either, so.
Okay, cause there's a, like I say, there's a group that watches them. I'll have to reach out to them. They actually watch every nest. They know where every nest is in Colorado. And they document them, how successful they are. It's kind of interesting.
Well, yeah, hopefully they stick around because they've, they've had, probably since the town has taken over that preserve, I think that pair has had at least one eaglet every year. If not, like he said, they've had triplets a couple of times.
Yeah, they're amazing.
And usually they get twins.
Yeah, most years, that's what it is. And like I say, last year was disappointing, cause there was two eggs in the nest that blew down.
Yep, when it blew out.
So they are a very successful pair of eagles. I mean, it'd be wonderful, we'd get an osprey platform over there. So I say, there's one in the gravel pit just to the west, but another one, cause there's a lot of osprey in this area. I mean, that's what I would love personally, to see this piece of property become is a, you know, a wildlife preserve. You know, with, I know there's talk, I'm pretty close with A V L T and I know they give you guys a lot of money, which is wonderful to upgrade that. I know they paid for a lot of that restoration on the ponds and all that. And that's all good. They seem to be willing, they seem to find money. I'm not sure where. But, yeah, so I'd love to see that continue if at all possible.
It's been a good partnership that we've had with the A V L T and Trey does a good job working with them and getting stuff done over there and keeping it.
They are, they're a great organization. And like I said, I don't know where they get their money, but I know they're always spending it, so.
But to help the trail out, more people need to walk it.
Yeah.
Beat in.
It's a, it's a lost cause. In other words, there's a section that you couldn't find it.
It gets grown over pretty quick, pretty easy if people aren't out there on a regular basis, walking it.
Which is good.
Yeah. It, it's good and bad, exactly.
But if it, if it was maintained to at least a slight level, once a year, you know, people would use it. In my opinion, that does absolutely nothing to bother, bother the wildlife, cause I've watched them go right around them. See, there's several kestrel nests are right on that trail. And actually where the cooper's hawk is, they don't use that nest every year, is not too far off it, but that doesn't bother them.
And we gotta get another bridge in across that.
Yeah, there, yeah.
Ditch that got dug.
Yeah, so what's the deal with that? Why have they not cleaned the ditch anymore? Every year, they used to go over there and clear that ditch, which I'm not sure that was necessarily a bad thing. It was probably good. And they haven't in the past at least three years.
Are you talking the one that runs north, south?
The lower ditch, yeah.
Oh, the ditch that flows water?
Yeah, that, with a.
Not sure why the ditch company hasn't cleaned that ditch out.
At least two years. They used to take that track hole in there every single year and clear it. And then they would flood the bottom, which they've done this year, whether it's intentional or not, there's water that's down in the bottom. That whole area, that other bridge is flooded right now. So they must have opened the first, the top ditch and let it in there. But it'd be wonderful, they'd give you more water. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope you enjoyed it.
Oh, yeah.
You don't know it's in your own backyard.
Like I say, it's good that people don't know, but.
Yeah, they just do stupid things.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Don't be surprised if you see that presentation on community TV.
I get paid for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Evening, sir.
You made it.
You made it.